Welcome to Life is Good, I'm Heather Perkey and you're ever loving hostess. And today we have somebody really special. And if you live in Newport, extremely special. And necessity is the mother of invention. And I'd say that when nature invented you, Ms. Carter Finnegan, they did a great job.
Oh, you're too kind.
Yeah, I'm kind. That's enough. We're gonna close the show now. No, seriously, Carter's running for city council. I don't know why you're doing that.
Why?
Yeah. It's not a job I would do.
Oh my goodness, it's so important. We need more young female voices at the table. There's been a lot of positive momentum brewing in this city. I've seen it since I've moved here.
Me too.
And it's really great. Some, I've just been working in the community and, um, that was my cue, thank you. Working in the community and there's just a lot of positive feedback and it often gets reciprocated. So it's often just choosing to make that step, willing to dedicate every other Monday night to the town. And also, this gives me a platform to reach out and connect with more of my neighbors, which I've really enjoyed doing thus far. So it's just kind of a natural fit.
Yeah, it is a natural fit. You're a natural fit around here. And when I first met Carter and her husband, Patrick, I was blown away by the fact that they had opened a little exchange library in front of their home. I was a town librarian for 27 years. And people used to come into my house. If I'd thought about putting it out on the street, I would've saved a lot of laundry. A lot of house cleaning. But I love it. It's right there on the, that street's got four letters in it, Sias. Sias Avenue. And I've stopped by and looked at it and it's a good selection and it's just a nice thing to do.
Thanks. I've been clearing the path too, so you can still access it in this wonderful snow that we're having, so.
Are we having snow?
Yeah, we're snowing.
Yeah, we had what, seven feet today or something like that?
It feels like it.
Yeah, but they get it, they got here anyway. And Carter sent the word out to the city to say, if anybody wants to get to know me, show up at Dunrobin today. And the back of this house is completely filled. They're all so great. And these are the nice young minds of Newport. And I've been thrilled watching all of you in action. Because when I moved here, things were very negative. And that was about six and a half years ago. And I was not pleased because I came from a town where people got along. And we talked a lot about each other behind our back, but you know, didn't really. It's East Berkshire, Berkshire, Ennisburg, Richford. And it was a very community oriented trifecta of cities. And when I moved here, I felt naked. Because everywhere I turned, there was a negative thing being said or done. And I thought I'd fallen into another planet. And then all of a sudden, things started to rev up, become fun. Where is this fun coming from? Where are these events coming from? And everyone said, oh, it's the young professionals of Newport in the Northeast Kingdom. And I've met all of you now and hundreds of them are here now. And, and I can't believe how much work you do. And you're all, they're all without ego. They do it for the betterment of Newport. They do it for the betterment of the fun they want to have. And I met you when you were working with the ciders at Eden.
Yep, yep, yep. Local businesses, that was, I mean, it's still there and it's a different form. But it was really fun to interact with people that were visitors or other families. And that whole space, I think, is going through a little bit of a facelift, a little bit of change. But yeah, we were just really listening to, okay, what do we want to see here? But often we were finding that we were just bringing back things that had already existed, but that had just fallen off for one reason or another, whether it was mismanagement, other, it was just like.
Lack of population?
Yeah, lack of, and then lack of funding that follows that. But really, we've been trying to just revive Newport. And really also getting feedback every time we tried to do something new or different. We go back to the community and say, what worked, what didn't, and then try to shift gears. So keeping things accessible, keep lots of options open, you know.
Well, name some of the things, well, the things I've enjoyed.
Yep.
Winter Saturdays.
Yes.
The Wednesdays on the waterfront where all of these people set up little booths to give information or whatever. And you know, they may have moved here, but they don't want to change the essence of what is Newport. They are reviving what used to be here when I was growing up 10 miles from here. Across the lake. And I come over in my little 12 foot boat with a five horsepower. And park, dock, and I'd come up and I'd have a Dairy Joy or I'd walk the street. There were things going on every day and people in the streets and they are a game.
Right, right. And it's really, I don't want to take credit for Wednesday waterfront because it's Andrea and Vera, that was their thing. But after so many years, when volunteers shepherd such an effort, it's quite an organization to pull that together. Then that's where NDD can come in and say, hey, how can we help you with volunteering? How can we help spread the word? And there's just a network of people that are willing to take that on. And they have different skill sets and they come from different parts of our region. But I mean, you were talking about, you know, the tri, your tri area. And that's why I would love to see Newport kind of grow into. I can understand right now where our neighbors don't really want to collaborate.
Why?
What? What we're still working on in getting our act together.
Who would you like to see here with us?
See, oh, like I, like.
Yeah, who do you want to drag in here?
Drag in here? Well, I would say, you know, a lot of our businesses and our populations are very closely tied with Derby and also Derby Line. So we've got a village center, we've got a large municipality with a lot of businesses. That often, and our lines are even drawn like this. It's very silly when you have to cry. You're like, suddenly I'm in Derby and then I'm back in Newport. We're very aligned in that way. And then other neighbors like Newport Town, they have got such a great agriculture hub. Coventry's got a lot of different folks that are nearby and come and visit and use Newport. It's about pivoting and saying, hey, Newport's got something to offer, come into Newport as a meeting place. Or how can we support you with your initiatives, whether it's, there's talks. Yeah, so there's just other, like, larger infrastructure projects that would be really neat to say, can we work together on this? But right now, I understand why that is not.
But you can make it happen probably.
I would hope so.
With the energy in this room and with all the things I've seen you all pull together since I've lived here. And I'm a fly on the wall when I get involved with anything, NDD, it's Newport Downtown Development. And it's not a lie. It really is developing. But you might not see it developing in businesses, growing on Main Street. That's not their responsibility. They want to bring people in for other things that we do here. It's a four season recreational place. And there are activities that people can come into. And when you bring the other towns and their interests, you guys can do it because you're like little magnets. Really?
And then more magnets, the more, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd love to see that because we're all friendly among, among the towns. But I think we're, to motivate people to get in their car and come to Newport when they can stay home and do stuff around their area. You know, the Derby days are phenomenal. And Newport days are phenomenal. And there must be a lot of interaction during those times because we don't, we don't compete on the same day.
Correct, yeah, there's a lot of like collaboration that way. Like I'm thinking about Kingdom Games, how they put on their Dandelion Run, that actually happens in Derby. But then, you know, the afterparties in Newport, so that sort of collaboration works well. But it's also about, you know, thinking of the families, you know. Just because you go to one school district or if you're placed at one school doesn't mean that, you know, events aren't open to everybody.
How are you getting that word out?
Facebook's a good tool, but also just connecting with the teachers in the schools. Like I'm thinking about going back to what events have happened in the past or what works. I brought back the bike rodeo through.
Oh, that was you?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That doesn't surprise me, of course it was you.
The direct committee, yes. So that was something where I joined and I had joined right as it was supposed to happen. And I was like, what, this amazing thing? Okay, I'm on it next year. So, and then this year it's gonna be really, I'm really excited about it too.
We need somebody on the city council who can get excited about things. Because that excitement draws people, draws action, draws, draws revenue.
Right, and the bike rodeo is multifaceted in the way that it's supposed to be helping safety. It also, there's a whole initiative to try to get Newport more bicycle friendly. There's this whole recognition avenue. But I'm more about just being, getting people, opening up people's eyes to having more cyclists on the road. Maybe eventually creating more bike infrastructure, like maybe some protected lanes. Maybe, and also, you know, with NDD, we're trying to get an established bike parking. Such as these small incremental steps that we have to take that are very deliberate with the larger mission of, let's make Newport more bicycle friendly.
Bike parking?
Yeah, bike parking, crazy. And they could be even really cool looking and being like a sculpture, right? I think that was the idea, is that.
Somebody in the audience has something to do with this, just speak up out there? Who might that be? It's one of the millions. Is that Felicia Updike I see?
Oh my gosh.
Will the other people move out of the way so I can see Felicia? Thank you very much. Okay, Felicia, speak up.
We're currently working to get bikes, or get Newport bike certified as a bicycle friendly city.
Wonderful. Most of us are certifiable here. It's one of the qualifications of moving to Newport. And it works for me. Anyway, you have no idea how these young people and city, you know, I watch all the city council meetings. And Pamela's videos them, so nobody, nobody has to go to the meetings, I'm so lazy. Anyway, I watched them a couple of days later after they've mellowed. On any KTV and I'm fascinated with how much work you have to do. I mean, there's just no pencil pushing. You guys get a packet on Friday night. You spend the entire weekend studying it. And it has everything from budgets and proposals and licensure and everything else. Are you sure you want to do that? Drives me out of my mind.
You know, it's preparing for any sort of meeting, just set time aside. And then I think Mondays will be really critical for me to be researching and looking into. If I don't know the answer, are there community members that I know that are good resources? Or are there organizations that I know that support rural communities like ours? So there's, you know, a number of people that I work with, but also supporting agencies that are around. Like for example, I mean, I work at NVDA, so the Regional Planning Commission.
Let's, what does that stand for? Cause we're getting into a lot of.
Yeah, you're right, right. I'm about to say a lot of acronyms. So Northeast Vermont Development Association.
What does that do?
That's the Regional Planning Commission, or RPC for short, for our area. So we help with, oh gosh, hazard mitigation plans, transportation planning, regional planning, your town plans, and then grant administration. And that's, that's me. I'm kind of like the ugly stepchild.
Oh, you're the, you're the money girl.
I like that. I mean, that's something pretty okay. I'm not gonna say no.
Your husband's here. Is, is this true?
He's the money girl.
So I've just been helping municipalities work through some grants, mainly this one program. But there are other agencies that exist in Vermont that are here to help municipalities. So I don't want to, again, I don't want to bore or lose anybody with all the acronyms or the different agencies. But I just would be willing to ask for help outside of Newport. And also, when I work with other municipalities, therefore their select boards, maybe their town clerks. I will have some perspective on how some, how some programs could work. But also in addition, what are some takeaways? What are some learning lessons that we as a municipality wouldn't have to go through? I don't want to repeat any mistakes or, I think we've, we've been learning a lot for years.
Well, this is not the first time you've applied for this position.
True, yeah.
You know the game and you've been paying attention completely ever since you first got interested in municipal government. And I'm really proud of you for that.
Thanks.
Because I've watched you. And I remember stopping at Eden and saying, oh, let's talk about something. And somebody interrupted and asked you a perfectly out of Eden question about something to do with what you were doing in town. One of the young people's adventures. And I just, I just stood back. And you said, well, it's going to start here and we've begun that process. And with this process, we're going to move on to this one. And then this one, and it will come to fruition on the following date at exactly this time. And I'm going, I do not like, I'm too old for organization. I did that in my tender years. That was about a million years ago. But you've got it together and you know what you're doing.
I like to think so, but also I am willing to admit if I don't and ask for help.
That's the smartest thing. There was a philosopher, there was a philosopher, many, and other people who said, the smart person in the room is the quiet one. That leaves me out completely. There's somebody raising their hand over there with a question. Identify yourself and then just ask your question, go ahead. I'm all ears, as is Carter. Okay, put your hand out. Oh, yes, sir.
What from your, what experience from your professional life will you lean on to navigate your role as a city councilwoman?
Well, the first time I went for city council, I was a teacher. So there was a lot of, I mean, organizational, being prepared, being patient. Taking some maybe unregulated folks in the audience and having to work through issues. So that is still with me. But I think I just have a little bit more awareness around state programming. And I think right now, although the word is unknowns from the federal government, it would be helpful to have somebody who is somewhat aware of the changes and how those trickle down and affect our town's budget. And then in addition, I am, I think, growing on the patient scale for sure around how, I mean, just as your example with, when we chatted at Eden, how things have to be methodical, that it's not going to be an instantaneous change. That slow proactive and intentional moves by the city council help slowly steer that ship. Because I know in the past, we have jumped on board with something, EB5 scandal, and it's gone real bad. But instead to recover, we're going to have to make, yeah, deliberate choices. And I'm, and I'm also very aware of those and I'm willing to stick it through. I'm willing to have that patience. It's like energy, but also understanding of how it's gonna take some time, so consistent.
One thing I've noticed ever since I've met you is that before you answer any question, you stop and think. There are a lot of politicians and there's no getting around it, city, city management of any kind is politics. They don't respond with deep thought behind it. I'm not saying locally, I'm saying generally speaking, if you're looking at a politician who knows the answer right away and immediately steps on, it's mostly ego. You are very humble. And when I interview you, and this is not the first time, or even spoken with you on, you always stop and think before you answer. And that gives me great trust in you. Cause there's nothing worse than a knee jerk reaction when it's dealing with my finances, our taxes, our budget, or anything that we're dealing with now. And you've been following it. So what do you think the major concerns are of Newport right now?
Major concerns, I definitely see the budget and taxes and how that impacts families in our community. I think people are starting to be more tuned in. I think the correct questions are being asked. And I do see some changes in the intermediate, like around right now. I think some things are being addressed and coming to light. But I still think that we are gonna have to talk about the water and sewer budget and addressing that deficit. It's quite large.
You know what I wish? I'm interrupting, I am so sorry. The prison got away with not paying lots and lots and lots. And they said, was there a problem with their meter? Is there a way they can turn the meter off? Is there a way they can fix it so they weren't charged? I would like to see the city council and mayor make a retroactive demand and solve my problems.
That happened here with you?
No, I'm a, I'm a citizen. I pay for water. And, you know, if they're gonna be increasing my expenses, go and get what is owed to us, that's only fair. And it's a big organization prisons, you know. And I, I don't think they'll feed the prisoners in any worse way if we have to take their water away from them, I mean. But I think that's a scam, if I may say that, or, or an issue. That has not been dealt with completely. And if there's money there, go for it. Go for it, Carter.
Yeah, I'll look into that. I'm not, I'm not as, I'm not as sure what you're, I mean, just use more research, I guess, around this.
Yeah, it's, it's sticking in my craw because I watched that several meetings. And, and I am so glad that NEKTV has these meetings of the Monday night. You know, you can be doing your laundry or doing, baking a cake or working in your office and you can listen to these meetings. You don't have to watch them. Just listening to them gives you great background of what's happening. Cause nobody, very few people have time to go on Monday night.
Yeah, people are restricted. And I appreciate, yeah, NEKTV, cause I mean, they're helping us follow open meeting law, which is excellent. But also, having that videotape allows you to see the body language of folks. It's, it's, and then, and you can skip around and go to certain topics so that, you know, if you really are, you care about, oh, you know, this nonprofit going in the gateway, you want to like listen in there. Oh, you know, okay, they're talking about the budget, let's go over that. It's, yeah, it's a great tool.
What do you think of the gateway and its future? Gateway Center, right down by where we dock the Northern Star.
I mean, it is, it's a really neat asset that the city owns and can have really fun events that bring community together. And it's really awesome to see MEMSEC, the Memphormegog Science.
That's the Memphormegog Science and Education Center. And there's a young man named John running it with his noble assistant. And I, I've been up there and they've just cleaned it up and made it look, it's the top floor so far. And I don't know if you've ever thought about that as a science center, but they're making it happen. Thank you, everybody. They're making it happen. And once again, it's young energy, educated energy, my God.
Yeah, it's about making Newport a place that you want to live, that there's something for everybody to do. And I think orienting the youth and getting them excited about the lake that we live on is so key to having folks stick around. It just adds value. Education, obviously, is something I care about. And it's, it's, it's just a knockout. It's, it's, and again, they are doing, they are growing very intentionally. And from what I hear from teachers, from what I hear from them, cause they're also friends, as it's going really well. And yeah, the gateway is such a neat, yeah, point. I don't know, to still launch off, the fact that you can just go, when you're driving on Main Street, you go, oh, it's that. And you just go down, like I go by on my bike, pedestrians, and you just walk out right onto the water, like the public docks. Also accessing that in the summer is a wonderful resource.
It really is.
Right now it's a little bit cold.
Yeah, speaking of which, I was hired by a Bollywood film company a long time ago. And I was still living on the other side of the mountain. And there was Rajak and got Fareed and Sabu. One from Pakistan, one from India, and Fareed worked with me at JetBlue, but he was the cameraman. And they wanted me to location scout so they could make commercials and take them back to wherever they lived. Because they thought Claritin commercials here would be good and they thought Bollywood movie here on the mountain would be good and everything like that. And so I took them everywhere and I brought them to Newport because it was so gorgeous. And it's, you know, I did my internship at the courthouse. So I love all the old buildings and I love all the interior and they freaked out. They couldn't believe it. And I took them down to the wharf. And so Fareed went to the end of the wharf, it's November. Fareed went to the end, you know, and he's got the camera and Rajak is going crazy. Look at that, look at that, look at that, look at that. And so Fareed's going up and down like, this is a camera, right? And he gets dizzy and he drops the camera in the water. And I start, I'm on one of them, and I start racing down the wharf and I'm throwing off my clothes, it's November. Off of my suede jacket, you know, off of my sweater. I'm ready and I'm running down there. And I get to the end and somebody grabs me by the belt and it's Fareed. And he says, it's digital. And I went, it's floating. It looks like the Titanic. I can still get that. And he's got me by the pants and he says, it's digital. I don't think it's digital. I said, I can still get it. Anyway, the thing goes, sinks. And then we went up to Newport Naturals. Where Fareed said, oh, swear word, swear word, swear word, swear word, swear word. I'm gonna get killed. I'm gonna get killed. That's $50,000 camera. They rented it from a company in Mississippi, $5,000 deductible. This is just some of the fun you can have on the dock. It's got nothing to do, you know, it's got nothing to do with your, it's got nothing to do with your ascension to City Hall.
You know, yeah, no.
So a week later I came back and I had a lifeguard and I got a rope tied around my waist and they dropped me and I tried to get in the.
Did get in the water, that's right.
And I couldn't breathe. They dragged me out of the water like this. And I mean, I hadn't trained being in cold water back then. So it swims with the fishes.
Yeah, it's still there.
But they needed it, so they filmed us, so that my friends filmed it, so that we could send that to the insurance company so they could have proof of attempt to get it back with Heather and the guinea pig.
Is that when your filming career began?
No, that was, that was at the end, I was on camera then, it was terrible. But that's just some of the fun you can have that you don't expect to have in Newport. I swear to God, those people in Pakistan and India and Fareed at JetBlue, well, they'll never forget that. And they'll never forget Newport. It's an unforgettable place. I can't believe I live here now. Neither can Fareed. He lives in Texas, what's he gonna know, you know? But life is so good here.
Truly, truly.
So we have a lot of people in the audience who are dying to ask questions and I've been holding back, telling my little story. So sorry, Carter. I just want you to know that this place has a history that shouldn't be repeated.
Moving forward, yeah.
Yeah, moving forward. I'm sorry. Nathaniel, did you have a question?
Sure, yeah. Can you talk about maybe some, like, top three things that you think Newport is doing right that you would like to continue or preserve? And also, three things that you would like to either see changed or improved upon?
Hmm, that's a good one. Okay, I'm gonna pause for the. Yeah, so my, the first thing in my brain always goes to, going back to the lake, but also the infrastructure that we have, our walking paths, our access. Like our city has really affordable paddle boats that you can rent. We have e-bikes that you can try. There are just programs that are accessible. There's summer camps. Like I could go on and on about the resources that Newport has to offer to support our outdoor recreation. And then in addition, kind of segueing, so that's number one is our, is those things. Second thing is all of the nonprofits and the organizations that exist in Newport that support these programs and also help keep our water quality in check. So that goes from MWA, which I obviously have bias to.
But is that the.
Memphormegog Watershed Association, but also around, like NECA is based here. They offer so many programs for our, a lot of our, my hope to be constituents. There's like the Rotary Club. It just goes on and on about groups that don't have any financial gain because they are literally nonprofits, but yet they do and serve this community. So I think there, there's a lot that the city can do in continuing supporting those groups. That would be another thing I'd like to see. And then, yeah, housing is a huge thing that could maybe be on the, we need to do better at. But at the same time, there are some really big developments, I mean, not big developments, but improvements. So that are happening slowly and again intentionally with rural edge at the Old Catholic School.
Can you talk about that?
There's two phases. I know that the first, and I know that NVDA is involved in just overseeing and helping support these programs because there is some federal and state funding going into them. But it's supposed to be mixed use housing, so there's low income and then moderate. And there's, they're doing it in phases. So they're renovating one part of the building.
Okay, let's talk about where's that building now? It's, it's, it looks over Coventry. And it's sacred heart background, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I've been by that building several times and it's huge. And they are working like little fiends. So it will be very good. And you'll, you'll be happy when that's completed. How many houses, how many units will it have, do you know?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
Is the first phase is twenty-six.
Holy cow.
The second is more, right?
Seventy-something.
Yeah, I was like, it's under 100, but it's close to 100. And, and that, that goes back to, I mean, housing is the crux of so many issues that we are facing. We need to grow our grand list. That is it. That's, that's the long and the short of it.
Growing the grand list, it's gonna be tough. It's a real challenge because people want to move here. And it would be great for people who are working remotely. And there's, one thing that concerns all of us is the failing businesses. And I started, I've got a business here and I've got two businesses here. And people told me when I first moved here, oh, don't start anything, it'll never work in Newport. Oh, yes, they do. Because people are hearing about the little businesses that are starting. They're not Main Street businesses, they're back home businesses, they're in your house businesses, they're service industry. Things like that, art industry, those kind of things. To get that information out to other people who want to come here to do those things would be great. And. And uh, once again, housing will be an issue. Cause a lot of people come here, I met a, a young couple, a couple of weeks ago. And they came here with nothing, because they believe in Vermont. And they're staying in a sort of a camping issue, camp, camping situation. And they're building their own little industry and it will be good when it's started, they don't wanna talk about it on, on air or anything, I say, come and be on my show, they said, not yet, but we will do this.
Thanks.
It's the energy that comes in, that has belief that they love the area, they don't wanna disrupt the status quo. Because the people who've lived here before you are worthy of immense respect. One thing I noticed about your friends and your group, they all respect the people who came before them. Which is, you're leg up in anything you do here. Um, I don't wanna mention the state, anybody here from Connecticut? Um, not that I wanted to mention the state, but um, the most, the people, the general population I've met that have come in here from that area for the COVID rush. They've all gone now. They couldn't wait, they would, they would see me out there doing my yard and they said, what if you did it this way? You know, I'm holding a shovel and you're trying to criticize the way I'm doing this, do you really wanna do that? But you folks, none of you have ever given me anything but respect. And you've opened up a lot of doors for me, seriously, hand to the back, yes, sir.
Do you have any ideas how the city could change policies to encourage other types of businesses to move downtown?
You know, there are some that I've seen work in other communities and I think. I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to you on that one. Because I think also it depends on who is at the table and also where things lie. Um, post this current budget update, so if we are really looking to, yeah, I, I'm just gonna have to come back to you on that one.
Isn't that nice? So many people snap with an answer, and I've gotta say, I really respect you for the, that answer.
Yeah. But that's a good one, I think.
It's a very good question, yes, you have a question?
Um, yeah, I, so I, I think a lot of us.
Speak up, please.
I think a lot of us in the room have been here, not a very long time, a relative new residents in this area. And you touched upon a, a really important point, that there's so much history here, there's so many people who live in this community who've been here a long time. And I, so I'm just wondering, you know, the, the resistance that you've, you've come against and, and kinda making forward progress. And, and how you address some of the concerns of residents who've been here a long time and how you take in their, their perspective into, to what your plans are.
Wonderful question.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Um, earlier you mentioned the smartest person is the quietest, and what I was saying the first time around, my first campaign is that. And this is, um, of course, co-opted from the indigenous people, but that we are born with two ears and one mouth. So you should always be listening twice as much as you're saying something. Um, and really, a lot of, I guess I wouldn't say it, really don't face too much animosity or pushback. From where I was, like, grew up. Um, and I think it's just about making connections and listening and hearing where people are coming from. Um, because they do understand, um, where, why we are where we are right, right now, you know? There's choices that were made in the past that we don't wanna make again, so honestly, hearing them out is really, really key. Um, and then in addition, yeah, just building relationships, I, like my neighbors, I think of my neighbors that are across the street. And they're just fantastic, warm people, and they uh, saw a shoveling our snow for the first time. And they immediately just brought over one of those snow shovel pusher things, and it, it's been key, and I think of like that outward kindness. Every time I applaud the show, the, or sorry, I applaud our snow twice today, you know what I mean, it's like, well, I'm so glad that they. I made that extent, extended that effort, and I think that that's really like the heart and soul of Vermont is.
You got it.
You know, it's, if you really show that you are respectful, you wanna be here, you're, have the same values and you want. Yeah, similar goals, I think people will really talk and.
I'll tell you about Carter's values. Um, I really like your mom and dad.
Yeah.
And they're down to earth, and I didn't meet them at their best because they were. They were on a, we had a three hundred mile bike ride in one day or something like that, and they were pretty sore by the time they got to me. And I was parking bikes for that group. And um, I met your mom and she is a knockout, I swear to god, she was so full of energy. And Felicia, your dad too, he was not so full of energy. It was like detour on the path, so they couldn't take the bike path, and I tried that detour and I couldn't do it.
No.
No, because my bike wouldn't hold the re- the rocks.
It gets real steep.
So, but it was lovely to meet your mom and she just was bubbly about Newport. And she's, I can't believe this ride, I can't believe this beautiful town, I can't believe how wonderful Carter's so happy here. And uh, you know, that was a wonderful thing to hear, because we always wonder how our children are doing wherever they are. And uh, she was glowing because she was happy for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is great.
Yeah, that's funny, I'm like thinking about, oh yeah, Canada's a really great neighbor, I would love to be more collaborative with us.
To dream the impossible dream, well, we have to wait for a change of regime on that one.
Yeah.
Do you know, I just heard a fact today, I was at a barn, I was milking cows today. And the man said, and by the way, by the way, Heather, um, that Hitler guy, he only took fifty-seven days to take over Germany, eh? And I went, wow, it was fast. So, we have, in this area, we have people who love both sides of the polit- political spectrum, and you're gonna have to deal with both kinds. You're gonna deal with the people who are pro and for, and against the present situation. And uh, you brought it up, Canada and US relations are not good, but what we can't forget is we have to love everybody. You know, you know this, you're a very centered spiritual girl. And it doesn't matter what politics they're actually following when they live in your town, you have to love them and work for them and with them. Because when it boils right down, it's one-on-one and our city.
I agree, yeah, I think that what's really unique about at least Newport, City Council or select boards across our, our state. Is that national politics don't really transcend or mesh with what's going on, day-to-day decisions and. That come up at select board meetings and city council. Um, and it's also worth noting that Newport is pretty purple, and I think that's really beautiful, actually. I like having, and I love this area too for my job, is I will go and work with one, I'm not gonna try and name towns. But I'll go work with one town that has a one different attitude, and then at the end of the day, I will have a select board meeting with another town. And they have totally different attitudes, but yet they're next door neighbors and they respect.
I think we could do that in Vermont.
Definitely.
And I wish Vermont was running the country, because we could have both sides come to the table.
And then Bernie on their head.
And Bernie. You know, I'd love to get him here, he's never visited me here. And, and I'd love that, just to get him on my couch. Not to psychoanalyze him.
Yeah.
But just, just to have, to bring his energy in here, or for any other reason for that matter, but I'd love to have him here.
I would love to see that interview, I'd love to sit right there, I'd love to swap places.
You'd be asking questions.
Yeah.
And if, if we could get a word in edgewise, we definitely ask Bernie a lot of questions, isn't he amazing?
Yes, I'm just now imagining like, what if, you know, come on out, and then he comes through your like really cool door, and then I slide over on the couch. Like. Or something, yeah.
He's loved it too, and I'll tell you something, in my old house, I used to have debates with all the political candidates and governors and ambassadors and. Would come and I'd bring the whole town in, I just had a great big old room, and I had a newspaper, so all my students, everybody reading for my newspaper. Sometimes twenty, thirty kids, uh, all teenagers, all smart, all vocal, would come in and grill them. And, and uh, oh, they put them on, oh, they put them on their toes.
You know what's going on, yeah.
And uh, I'd like to do that here, they have to come over a mountain to do it though. And that's the shame of it all, everything was so easily accessible over there, I wouldn't move back right now, because I never wanna clean another big house. You know, I open the door here and go, and I'm dusted.
Yeah.
But it's just great, but I'd love to do that here, and you know, I'll bet you, if you get elected, when you get elected, uh, you'll help me do that.
That'd be really fun, organizing like a teen kinda coalition or just.
No, just getting the politicians into here for getting some students to come in and ask questions, getting grownups to come in and ask questions. But the teens, believe it or not, if they were here tonight, they'd have more questions than I do. Because they're, they have, their fingers on the pulse of what their needs are. And you were a teacher, so you understand that. Um, speaking of federal funding. Um, a lot of nonprofits are suffering.
Yep.
This week, um. But it turns out, there was a, there was an injunction, but it was only on the letter that was sent originally from. So, some nonprofits have been hit here in Newport this week. And um, I don't know when you'll be watching this, it'll probably be on summer reruns when you've already been elected six years, you know, but um. But federal funding has been cut drastically to nonprofits. And that's where we're going to have to pick up our boots, or pick up whatever we pick up.
Yep, yep, it's a bummer that a lot of like altruistic, um, programs and things that our communities need. Run on grants, puts more emphasis on the grant programming that does exist and where we can try to supplement. Um, and really just also collaborating, just in case somebody doesn't get, if they fall short, we're gonna have to have people step up. Maybe volunteer more.
Yeah, that, that could be the benefit of it, if we.
I know that's not, it's not the solution to everything, and I know it's a hard.
Barter is very important, and I'd like to see us get back to barter. The, it's got nothing to do with your campaign, but it's got everything to do with your heart. You'd be up for bartering. And if the inflation rate continues to rise, and if we don't get, there are twenty-five percent ca- tariffs over here, twenty-five percent tariffs over there. Ten, ten from China, if we're impacted so greatly that we can barely afford to live as consumers. Of what we need, let alone the thrills. Um, as a city council member, you'll have an overview of that need and we could possibly have to go to barter. And would that be something a city councillor would be interested in, in uh, putting forward as a, a, a city effort?
I guess, I, you know, I'm having hard to commit, um, cause that it, it sounds like we've been in a really dire state. Um, and I guess it just depends on with who and what, what's our currency, what are we, what are we needing? Um, and yeah, I, again, I, I'm hoping that we have better relationships with our surrounding communities to do that.
I'm saying that would be one benefit of having a bad economy. Because that would definitely build this community into one of co-dependence.
Okay, yes, I follow, yeah, like with all the agriculture economy around us.
Agriculture, human resources, plumbers, plumbers, roofers, painters, everything. And I'm throwing that out at you, because you're the first politician I've talked to since thinking about this. And it, I always look for the positive in the situations.
Right.
And when you think of certain parts of the country saying it's all over for us, Vermont is better than that. And Vermont isn't necessarily a consumerist, consumerism state. We haven't gone so far into the, I can't wash my own windows, I have a woman to do that, or I can't shovel my driveway, I have a man to do that. You know, we can do things for each other, because we still know how to do.
And we're really fortunate, because we have a lot of land to grow food, we have pretty good access to water, sometimes too much. Um, but other than that, and as far as our population numbers, we could sustain. And, and I think also going back to those Vermont values of supporting your neighbors. Um, like, even though you don't have to barter to shovel your elders driveway, you still do.
Yeah.
You know, I shovel a walkway for the mailman, you know what I mean, it's like nothing, again, he's doing his job, but I'm just trying to make it easier. And it, so I think there's like, we could, there is that opportunity, we're really fortunate that we have that backbone of, yeah, altruism. But also, we do have land.
Yeah, I brought that up, because I wanted you to see what Carter would say about this, because uh, Carter wouldn't immediately stop that idea stupid. That's called an open mind, yes, sir.
Are there opportunities for members of the community to meet you in person and ask you questions of their own?
Yes, um, on Fridays, which is tomorrow, I don't know who's not, um, from eight to ten, I will be at the cafe, the.
Oh, this is not going, this will be aired after that, but I'm sure it will be a good memory for you.
There will still be a couple, just every Friday, um, I've just learned that there's some events, the, there's a meet the candidates on Wednesday.
Where?
At the library.
And what date?
Uh, my brain is telling.
This is the thirteenth?
The thirteenth, no, then it's this.
It's the nineteenth.
Thank you.
Okay, February nineteenth at the library, Goodrich Memorial Library, right in.
Yeah.
Downtown.
And downtown, and then the following is a debate, um, the next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, okay? And then on the twenty-seventh.
Where's the twenty-fifth?
Oh, the twenty-fifth is also at the library.
Okay, the library.
By the library, I mean, sorry, by Newport Daily Express, host at the library in partnership. Um, but the really exciting one, and therefore, it's okay when this comes out. But on the twenty-seventh, Andy Tushat and I are having a meet and greet at the East Side, so you can come get a little snack, get a drink, chat, ask us questions. Um, and.
And you are, you and Andy are both running?
Yes, yes.
Well, I like Andy.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he's done some papers for me as an oilman. So, you know, just a really decent human being.
Yeah, again.
Fireman too, right? So, he's a decent human being.
Yep, definitely rooted in volunteerism, his family grew up here, stuff like that, it's just, I think we're very balanced. Um, pretty much off the gate when we started conversations, it was like, we're not always going to agree, but we, again, that respect, that understanding and wanting to see.
And pardon my ignorance, but is there anyone else running?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. King.
Um, Carl King.
Carl King, will he be participating in the debate?
I'm not sure, I, I really just saw the Facebook event yesterday.
And the date is the twenty-seventh?
The twenty-seventh is gonna be Andy and I's meet and greet at the East Side, that's the biggest.
At the East Side, at the twenty-seventh, what time?
Um, anytime between five to eight.
Five to eight, big night out, folks, at the East Side, which is phenomenal food. And um, phenomenal atmosphere.
Yeah, Dina.
Dina does a superb job.
Good job.
Yeah, so I'm really, really happy for you. And uh, I don't know, are there any more questions, folks, uh, any more cheering section over there? Yes?
What do you like to do in your free time?
Oh my gosh, good question, um, I love to craft, right now I'm in a pottery class, and that's really fun. Working with my hands, I love to puzzle, I love to play Bananagrams with my husband. Loved, you probably see me walking my dogs and moving outside, that's number one, skiing, I run into some of these cuties all the time on the trail. Um, yeah, so downhill skiing, uh.
You like downhill skiing?
Yeah.
I spent twenty-five years falling off the T-bar.
Yeah.
Terrible.
You may, I bet you get a lot of like clients that have, get injured from skiing. Remember one time we were here, this is my story. So we were having, it was no, it was a mayor or candidate thing, I think. Anyways, you had Airbnb guys come in, and they come through, like, of course, your TV thing we're doing, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And they just walk in and the second guy's like, just, and you immediately were like, what happened? And he was like, uh, I heard, I don't know, I fell, and you like were a magnet to him, and then you just started to like, you broke your collarbone. And then you're like, let me.
You'll never walk again and you'll never have children, I'm sorry.
You were like, we're pausing this, I gotta go do this, and you like helped him out. Because then they came out and they were, they sat with us at the table and they were snacking and asking questions too, so it was.
And let me ask, here's the best question, one of the three lovely snowboarders who were staying with me, took me aside and said, oh, can I give her my number? Oh god, I think I've fallen in love, I am so in love with that girl, I've never seen, she's so smart, and she's gorgeous, and I did not know you were married. I said, oh, I'd love it, if you guys got together, then you could move here, yay, you know, and I'm thinking, I'll ask her for her number for you. And he said, I think my husband might object.
He found me on Facebook. Anyways.
Well, I, I get to be everybody's mummy when they're, you know, I just love it so much, and yeah, he actually had broken bones, but uh. Yeah, I, I, I think I hooked him on Advil that, or ibuprofen that night, and I was icing the poor baby all night, poor baby. But they're just great kids, you know? So you see, not only a politician and a brilliant woman, but apparently attracted to the opposite sex. Especially if they're from New Jersey. Well, it's been so much fun, I love getting to know you, you're just so special.
Appreciate your time.
I hope it, you're kidding me.
Open up your space and, yeah, thanks to anybody who's tuning in and cares and.
Carter Finnegan, she'll be on the ballot. And I think if everybody in this room votes for you, um, you'll probably ruin by a landslide, because everybody's here, everybody in Newport. I can't turn the camera around to show you, everybody, but you know, I, I think I'm gonna have to expand the walls of the house to, to let the next gang in, you're all so nice. And I wanna thank you for all you do for Newport and for me, for letting me be a fly on the wall in your organization as a volunteer. It's just so wonderful to have you in town and it's wonderful to have you in my audience, Carter Finnegan. Absolutely fabulous candidate for city council and um. Come and meet her, at any of the meet and greets, you'll be delighted.
I'm on Facebook.
Oh, you're on Facebook?
Yep, I got a little Facebook page.
I want it.
Finnegan for, yeah.
Carter Finnegan for city council. And um, that's great, so we love these young people who are so wise and respect people who are my age. Even without wisdom, thanks for watching, life is good, I'll see you next week, thanks.